Good evening. Welcome to the June 13th, 2022 meeting of the Stillwater City Council. At this time, I will call the meeting to order and I'll ask that you all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag and the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will jump in at item three on the consent docket tonight. We have several items here, most of them are renewals of existing service agreements. Counselors, questions, comments, or motion on the consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket, please vote. It's approved with a vote of five to zero. I don't have anyone signed up to speak on items not scheduled for public hearings, so we'll jump down to public hearings. Item six A is receive public comment regarding a request to close a portion of the right-of-way at the corner of 10th Avenue and Lowry Street, CC-22-110. Do we have good notice?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Ms. Porter?
Sorry, mayors and councilmembers. My name is Jaclyn Porter, the city planner, presenting on behalf of the Community Development Department. The item before you is a partial closing of a right-of-way located at 923 South Lowry. Here's an area map of the proposed closure. Here's the area of the proposed closure. The easement is at the corner of Lowry and 10th. To the east is the Stillwater Parks and Recreation Center. Adjacent to the property, to the north, it is Keystone Engineering and Surveying. Here's a proposed site plan of the easement. The partial closure is to the south is being requested due to a proposed building expansion on Keystone Engineering. Kelly Harris is here for representing the applicant, or is the applicant. If you have any questions for staff?
Counselors, any questions for staff? Thank you. This time, I'll open the public hearing and I'll ask Kelly Harris to come let us know what's going on.
Good evening, Kelly Harris with Keystone Engineering located at 923 South Lowry. This is a little bit different tonight, I'm here representing our own company, so that's exciting. So we are proposing a building expansion both on the north and south sides of the building. 16 feet to be exact. And so, our building is currently located on the property line on the west and on the south. So we're located along a local street and it's 100 foot wide. And so you've seen these requests before where we've come in and requested to close part of that right-of-way. We are adjacent to the Park and Recs building and we did ask the city if they would like to participate in this since they're the only other property owner on our block. At this time, they didn't have a property or a project that would need that closure and so they didn't participate in this closing. So, in the packet, the sketch shows 20 feet of right-of-way closure. That was our original submittal. Through the review process, the electric company has asked us to reduce that to 19 feet. And we did and we submitted that sketch and revised legal description. So we are actually just requesting the 19 feet. Any other questions for me?
Counselors, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. I don't have anyone else sign up to speak, so I will close the public hearing at this time and I'll ask for staff's recommendation on the item.
Staff recommends to approve the closing request.
Thank you, Jaclyn. Counselors, questions, comments, or a motion?
So if the packet says 20 feet and we're actually doing 19 feet, is there something we need to do?
I wasn't aware that it had changed, I'm looking at it now. It's a closing of a smaller area. We'd already noticed the 20 feet, I think it would be proper to act on it tonight.
So does the motion need to reflect a change that's not reflected in the packet?
Has the packet been updated?
No, it has not.
It shows 20 feet. It doesn't specifically say 20 feet in the item.
Yeah.
But it would probably be good to.
But it does on this illustration.
But has staff received an updated drawing and an updated request?
The legal has been updated, yes.
So I think a motion-
Applicant has a full application?
Yes.
And they've met all of the application requirements?
Mm-hmm.
Then, based on your review and recommendation, the council can either approve or deny the request.
We were not aware of that either.
But just to clarify, we don't need to include, we don't need to specify the 19 as opposed to the 20. I think that was our-
I'll put it in the motion, I have no problem doing that, I just want to make sure what the motion needed to say.
Yeah, let's put it in the motion, to make it clear.
Are you calling for the motion?
I'm ready.
All right. Then I move, approve staff recommendation with a 19-foot abandonment of the right-of-way.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close this portion of right-of-way at 19 feet as requested by the applicant, please vote. That's approved with a vote of five to zero. I almost said it was approved with a vote of 19 to zero, but that would have been, that would have been wrong. All right. That takes us to item seven A. General orders, approve selection of Civic Plus LLC to provide hosted website services. Dawn Jones?
Good evening, mayor and councilors. We are here to request approval to pursue a new content management system for redevelopment of our website. This project is planned to begin this summer, once a vendor has been approved. Funding is included in the Communications Fiscal Year 23 budget. The new website and designated website manager are important pieces to revamping the city's communications department. While the current city's website is rich in content, it is lacking in organization, professional appearance, and many, many modern features and functionalities necessary. Some of the features our current website cannot offer as needed include: online forms and surveys, web apps, ADA compliance, responsive 24/7 chatbot service, robust search component, mobile responsiveness, enhanced notification system for releases and alerts, more user-friendly calendar, and subsite capabilities with intentional designs to meet various audiences. Let me give you some examples of that. Police and fire departments may need an information site, but they may also need a recruitment site. Branding would be uniform to identify City of Stillwater. However, design structure of the sites would be different to meet the various needs. Another example, Stillwater Regional Airport and the City of Stillwater websites. Again, consistent branding base and different design structures based on their purposes. In developing the new website, citizen engagement will be at the forefront. We need to provide organized content that is easily and readily available and meets the needs of current and future residents, patrons, and visitors. Brad Stewart, Director of IT, is going to share a little bit more about our background with the website and our RFP process.
Good evening, councilors, Mr. Mayor. As Dawn mentioned, I'm Brad Stewart, IT Director, and I'm going to speak very briefly about our current website and then just a little bit about the RFP process we went through. The city's current website and content management system was purchased in 2016. It was implemented that same year and was custom developed by a local Stillwater company, Juvo Web. Shortly thereafter, Juvo changed ownership in 2017. And because our website, the city's website, and the CMS system was so customized and beyond the scope of any of their other customers, the City of Stillwater was given ownership of that code. The new owner did not support or maintain the backend CMS or our website. Since that time, no significant enhancements to the site or management system have been made. In March of this year, 2022, the city proposed, or posted an RFP for a new website and hosted services. We received 10 responses and three were chosen to be interviewed and to provide demonstrations. A committee of staff from the Communications Department, IT Department, City Manager's Office, and Public Safety reviewed those proposals and interviewed the top three vendors. One of those respondents stood out from the others and because of, and that was because of their robust offerings and the integrated functionality of multiple modules. These modules are really full software applications in themselves, which are then uniformly integrated back to the main website. Other respondents had some of these features, but not with the same capabilities, functionality, or integration. Examples of these modules are an agenda and meeting manager, an HR module, park and recreation manager, and an online application and form builder. The committee members unanimously selected Civic Plus as the best option for the city's new website platform. Civic Plus was not the most expensive or the least expensive vendor. We would like to proceed with selecting Civic Plus and begin negotiations on a final contract for design, implementation, and hosting. So we have a recommendation, but at this point, we'd be happy to answer questions. We actually have a representative from Civic Plus here this evening who can assist with any questions.
Counselors, questions for staff?
I know there are several modules that were mentioned, we would be purchasing all of those?
All of those modules were included in the proposal.
Okay.
Once we negotiate, we'll decide which of the modules we want to proceed with, but yes, they're all on the table right now.
Is there also functionality within this that allows the city to, or the site to monitor what sites people are visiting most or least?
Yes, another piece of this that's very important to us is to track our, you know, traction on those different sites. That helps us to message better, what are we doing right, what are we doing wrong? So absolutely.
Okay. And I did hear you say that it was an ADA compliant website?
Our current site just does not meet all of what we would like for it to meet.
Right. One other question, what is the, so for, I was reading through the materials. For the, all the various modules, what is the implementation timeline? I saw some specifics for each module.
They can actually be implemented independent of each other. The entire implementation is somewhere between four and eight months.
Okay.
And again, during negotiations, we'll decide what's the highest priority and which to bring online first.
Okay. And then I have one more question.
Sure.
I've been a part of implementation in my work life, so. For any of the information, part of what this has is form, being able to collect forms and have people filling out online forms. Any of the data that people are providing on this website will be, will belong to the City of Stillwater, correct?
Yes, ma'am, and that is a game changer in itself. Because right now, in order for us to do various surveys and collect statistics, we don't own that information. We have to go with an outside vendor.
And I agree that that's very important, so. Okay, so those are all my questions.
They were great questions.
Could you explain a little bit more about what the yearly maintenance contract would include?
We're still negotiating that, but that would be that surveying and hosting, all of the things that we've already initially purchased, and the update cost of those as well. So that initial cost you will see on that first year is the startup. Every one of the RFPs had a significant startup, that first year base cost, or initial cost, and then the base leveled out after that. Does that help or no?
Yeah, I mean, does it include additional, like, design? Do they help as we add content to the website to make sure it continues to flow? If we have a new module or a new functionality that we want to add?
So those can be added from year to year. So, and they can also end from year to year. We're not locked into anything for a five-year term. It's whatever we would like to change as we go forward, and then we can negotiate those.
Counselors, further questions?
There was, I saw a reference, number one, the more I read, the more excited I got. I've been one of those community members and one of those city councilors who has struggled to find information on the website. And I'm excited about this. This is going to be a terrific, if it all comes together. I have several questions. The first one is, it was a reference to live chats associated with working on projects. Are those chats going to be archived or are they just going to sort of vaporize?
So, are you referring to the chatbot?
I guess so.
Okay. So, the way I understand, and we have Hector here that can also add in on this, and of course Brad. The way that I understand is that's going to be populated more, those responses. So as we are asked more and more questions, those automatic responses are populated, but we will help input that initial information.
I don't think that's what I was asking. What I think I was asking is, there's a means for staff to communicate with one another within this tool of working on projects, I thought. I thought that's what I read. So am I correct? And will those chats be archived, if I am correct?
Oh, I don't know about the chats.
Counselor, I don't know that we have a chat feature between staff.
That's fine. I misunderstood it, that's fine. There's also a module that deals with management of this meeting. And we're going to see example of this later tonight. Does it allow for a member who is logged in to not vote and have it be counted as not voting as opposed to an abstention?
Yes.
Perfect. And I think I saw that it does do this also. Does it allow for votes displayed in the room as well as on the live stream? That's the yes also?
Yes.
What is your backup strategy? Is it multiple locations around the planet? I mean, where is our data besides just in the primary repository?
Yeah, so it's in undisclosed multiple areas and it's all US-based.
What are your assurances and guarantees about protection of our data and our site from attacks, from ransomware, from any of those potential possibilities?
That's a great question. So at Civic Plus, security is of the utmost importance to us. We have a great case study where, is anybody familiar with the hacker group Anonymous? Okay, we were able to take them down when they targeted us. So, to give you an idea, we put millions and millions of dollars into security in the event that something happens.
And is there something in the contract where you have liability if we're successfully attacked?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Those are my questions, thank you.
Great questions. Any others?
Counselors, further questions? What's staff's recommendation on this item?
We are requesting a motion to select Civic Plus LLC to provide hosted website services and solutions in an amount not to exceed 117,000, which includes a 10% contingency and authorize staff to negotiate a contract.
Counselors?
I move to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation, please vote. At item's approval, with a vote of five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. We look forward to seeing a new website. Item seven B is consider awarding a bid to Johnson Controls as the energy service company for the City of Stillwater and authorize contract negotiations for an investment-grade energy audit. Mr. McClany?
Good evening, John McClany, procurement manager. Here tonight to ask you to select an energy service company, also called an ESCO, to complete an investment-grade energy audit for the City of Stillwater. As you may or may not know, the majority of our facilities operate a number of aging and energy inefficient systems. This would include heating and air conditioning, lighting, even our street lighting is aging and inefficient. This building here, the, a little louder, is that better? Even this building, the systems are 20 years old, so, and this is one of our newer facilities. There may also be a number of currently unknown renewable energy and/or energy efficiency opportunities within existing facilities which could lead to cost savings, improved quality of human health, air and water quality, and a more resilient community. The Renewable Energy Task Force, as you know, identified energy efficiency as the first priority and recommended that the city should lead by example. So to tell you about energy service companies, they are companies that evaluate existing systems and propose improvements that generate energy savings. The projects that they recommend are then financed and managed by the ESCO utilizing the funds generated. The potential is that city facilities receive new and more efficient systems and upgrades at no additional cost. The first step in this process is an investment-grade energy audit, and the IGA will identify potential projects that can then be considered for implementation. The city issued a request for proposals in January and four responses were received. An evaluation committee was formed and it consisted of members of the Renewable Energy Task Force and city staff. Task force members were Pat Darlington, Robin Cornwell, Madeline Goddard, and Henri Wahara. And the staff members were Becky Taylor, Lauren Smith, and James Driscoll. The evaluation committee completed a scoring rubric based on the requirements listed in the RFP. And then the top three scoring ESCOs were invited to be interviewed by the committee during the week of April 16th. The evaluation committee unanimously recommends Johnson Controls as the ESCO partner for the city for the following reasons. They had the highest aggregate score on the evaluation rubric. They clearly demonstrated that they had thoroughly reviewed the RETF report and understood its goals. They presented a cohesive and consistent team that generated, demonstrated energy, a positive corporate culture, experience, and a collaborative attitude. They demonstrated a forward-thinking, outside-the-box organization that will help guide Stillwater in areas where we don't know what we don't know. They spent a significant time and effort researching and getting to know the City of Stillwater, and they also showed a great deal of interest in Stillwater as a community, and enthusiasm for a long-term partnership. They invested the time and money necessary to bring top-level and relevant officials to Stillwater for the interview. And they proposed arrangements using Johnson Controls employees for part or full-time sustainability coordinator support until and if the city decides to hire its own. Depending on the outcome of the investment-grade energy audit and the selected projects going forward, the relationship with the selected ESCO could be decades long. The evaluation committee wanted to ensure that we have a dependable, long-term partner that will be there when we need them, and Johnson Controls clearly verified that they will be that partner. Have a recommendation, some of the members of the evaluation committee are here and we also have a representative from Johnson Controls if you have any questions of them.
Thank you, John. Counselors, questions for staff?
When we last met with the Renewable Energy Task Force, I think one of the things that we discussed was some of the grant opportunities that might be coming out of the new infrastructure bill. Does any of, I mean, obviously not currently, this wouldn't be a grant-funded initiative right here, but does any of this, or would, or could any of this dovetail into some of those grant opportunities? Has there been discussion of that?
Yeah, we've discussed that in the entire process, really. They're very familiar with grant opportunities that might be out there and that'll be part of what we look at going forward, whether it's going to be financed, whether it's going to be looking at grant opportunities and rolling those into the package of whatever we decide we're going to do.
So Johnson could work with a grant for a funded-
Yes.
-system?
Is there not a cost associated with this item?
The cost was part of what we looked at, but as we don't necessarily know what the total package is going to look like, that'll be negotiated as we negotiate a contract. They did provide us with a per-square-foot cost for our buildings and then a per-streetlight cost for our streetlights, and we can use that as the basis for our negotiations.
That's for the cost of the audit itself?
Yes.
And, I mean, was the cost of this, selecting Johnson compared to the cost of other vendors as part of this process?
Yes. It was a piece of the process. And the costs are almost, almost the same for three of the ESCOs and then one was way out there.
And I assume this one wasn't the one that was way out there?
It was not.
Well, it's reassuring to know it wasn't way out there and it's also reassuring that they also seem to take an interest in the community. Sometimes when we're doing big projects like this, it's nice to know that there's a vested interest in the community itself because then it really means that maybe the best foot forward to make this come to fruition is really going to happen, so. It gives me some peace of mind.
We're going to be working with the ESCO we select for a very long time, so we want to make sure that we had someone we could depend on.
Absolutely.
I think it's a really critical time to have somebody like this on board. I think as there's more dollars available and there's more focus kind of federally and to have partners that can help us seek those funds and help us kind of innovate as we go, I think is really important right now.
Energy's not getting any cheaper right now.
That's right. And it's changing, right? Some of, I think the governor last week said, right, we're an all-of-the-above approach and some of the, all-of-the-above is new and is new technologies and new things that are happening. So, the way we experience energy might be changing. It'd be nice to have somebody that's kind of thinking about that only and kind of guiding us along the way, particularly from a sustainability perspective, I think.
Further questions for staff? What's your recommendation, John?
We recommend a motion to select Johnson Controls as our ESCO partner for the City of Stillwater and authorize contract negotiations for an investment-grade energy audit. And we will bring the final contract back to council for approval prior to initiating.
Counselors?
Motion to accept staff recommendations?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the staff's recommendation on this item, please vote. It's approved with a vote of five to zero.
Thanks.
Thank you especially to the members of the task force that have been invested and involved for so long on these projects and we look forward to working with you more. All right, that takes us to seven C. Consider authorizations for the city manager to sign contracts related to benefits administration.
Good evening. City staff meets with Gallagher Benefit Services annually to review our current plan designs, options offered, and vendors associated with the city employee health benefits program. Information provided from Gallagher is the basis for the recommendation to renew a contract or to accept an alternate vendor based on submitted proposals. Listed below are the proposals for fiscal year 23. Continue with Blue Cross Blue Shield for a slight increase of over $8,000. Delta Dental, no change from the previous year funding. H&amp;M, our reinsurance carrier, a decrease of .07. Gallagher Benefit Services, no change. Hartford Insurance Group, which provides our life insurance, no change from previous year's funding. And the Gallagher Pharmacy Alliance, which is also in conjunction with Express Scripts, a one-year savings of over 671,000. Amounts have been allocated and prepared in the budget for fiscal year 23. I'm happy to answer any questions or I'm happy to recommend a motion.
Counselors, questions? I find it surprising and wonderful that there's more decrease here than increase.
We were excited.
Is there any reason that we are able to save money on benefits this year?
Our pharmacy, we were very lucky in joining the Gallagher Pharmacy Alliance. That gave us more negotiating and buying power with that larger group.
Excellent. What's your recommendation for us?
My motion is to recommend the city manager to sign contracts related to benefits administration outlined in the report for fiscal year 23.
Counselors?
Motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve staff's recommendation on the benefits contracts, please vote. It's approved with a vote of five to zero. Item seven D is consider recommendation to engage with O-MAG for fiscal year 22-23, City of Stillwater property and casualty needs. Melissa Reams?
Good evening, mayor and councilors, Melissa Reams, deputy city manager. The past three years, the city has used USI as our broker for property casualty insurance. This year, we've taken a different look and a different turn and we're going with a local broker. This is the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group. Much like the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund, the O-MAG was formed in 1977 by a group of communities who knew that if they pulled their needs and their resources together that they could probably get better costing for their insurance. O-MAG is situated in Edmond, Oklahoma, and attorney Carnley and I, Mrs. Carnley and I, have visited with them many times. It is amazing to me the value that we are going to get for our dollars. Not that we weren't getting good coverage before, but in addition to the good coverage, we're going to get what I call value-added services. So many times when we were reviewing the proposal with O-MAG, they would say, oh, that's already included, or you don't have to worry about that, we just take care of it. And so that value add is something very critical to our organization. And so that value add is something very critical to our organization. One of the things that I think Mrs. Carnley is extremely excited about is access to two attorneys that are on staff at O-MAG. Amber Gooch, who we've used for years when she was with Collins and Zorn to help us resolve employment issues, and then Matt Love. And I've heard him speak a couple of times. He really understands Oklahoma tort claim law, and that's what he will be representing us on as well. We're going to have access to all kinds of no-cost or very low-cost training that we probably could get in the open marketplace, but it's right there at O-MAG, and we can access that pretty quickly. So with that said, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those questions. The coverages, we have been through the coverages between USI and what O-MAG is proposing, and with some adjustments because of the tort claim limit, they really advocate for us to insure the city to the tort claim limit. USI was having us insure over and above the tort claim limit. So those are the big differences that I saw between the coverage. Questions?
Counselors?
I did include the declaration pages for you so that you can see what's there.
And it also looks like the deductibles would be much different?
They're much lower. So we had a current deductible, we found out, well, we knew this, but we didn't have to really inquire until the hailstorm hit us, and it's $250,000.
And so for this policy, it would only have been, it would be $25,000?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Great.
We're just getting all kinds of better deals this year.
We're going to need them, I think.
True. Counselors, further questions? What's your recommendation for us?
Our recommendation is that we authorize staff to enter into fiscal year '23 property and casualty needs in the amount not to exceed $549,475. And that is across the organization. That's SUA, all of the utilities, and then general government.
Counselors?
Move to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the staff's recommendation on property and casualty insurance. Please vote. It's approved five to zero. Thank you, Melissa. Takes us to item eight, Resolutions. 8A is Resolution CC-2022-17, a resolution of this order, city council prohibiting the flying of unmanned aircraft systems during certain public events on July 1st, 2022. This is our annual resolution that tells people they can't fly their drones over the fireworks show. Questions, comments, or a motion on the resolution?
Motion to adopt Resolution Number CC-2022-17.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. It's adopted with a vote of five to zero. 8B, a Resolution CC-2022-18, a resolution establishing the Stillwater Regional Airport Rates and Charges Schedule. This relates to airport rates and schedules. I don't know if we have comments from Paul, or you're...
I have to answer any questions.
Paul's here to answer any questions. Counselors, any questions on the resolution? Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt Resolution CC-2022-18.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. It's adopted with a vote of five to zero. Resolution CC-2022-19 is a resolution of this order, city council adopting the Stillwater Regional Airport Minimum Standards for Aeronautical Activities and Services. Questions or comments on this item? Or...
I'm happy to...
Could you maybe just give us an idea of what it is?
Good evening. Paul Prigle, Airport Director. The minimum standards for aeronautical activity have been in place at our airport since at least the 80s. Unfortunately, that's the last time they were updated as well. And so what we use these for, if somebody comes in and wants to start a business, or they want to offer some sort of aeronautical activity, this document is what we use to set a minimum standard of what they're supposed to do on our airport. And it really comes down to protecting the airport to make sure that we are not violating or overstepping on federal regulations, but it also makes sure that the users of the airport receive some sort of a minimum service standard. So for example, it gives like hours of operation. It requires what certification levels they may have if they're going to do mechanic work or do gas sales, or whatever the case may be. So this just really, this particular document is just a total refresh and update of our minimum standards that, again, have been in place since the 80s. I'm happy to answer specific questions, but that's kind of the high overview of it.
Thank you, Paul. Counselors, questions?
Paul, how are they derived in the first place, and then how did we go about updating them? What stakeholders, I guess, are involved in that?
So for this particular set, what we did is, we of course used the advisory board that's appointed by the council, which that group has taken a real specialized interest in the airport, and a lot of them are users themselves. And so we were able to, I started doing research into what other airports were using, so that was kind of my first step. There is some guiding documents through the federal government that we can use as well to kind of put everything together. And then it came down to just a lot of boring reading, and writing, and reading, and rewriting, and getting comments. So we've gone through the advisory board twice for two different readings. We've gone out for public comment, and then we presented a final draft to them most recently, and that was adopted to be sent to you all for final adoption.
One thing, I may have missed it, is did you establish, since it was so long, since it was updated, in the process of updating it, did you establish a policy for how often it should be revisited?
We did not, and there's really not a, there was nothing wrong with our past ones as much as there was, like, the document was a scanned-in typewriter version. I don't know. I mean, it was just, we just weren't able to regularly update it, and there were some things, like, for example, the insurance minimums and stuff, that we needed to review. And so it's really on an as-needed basis, but with the advisory board's charge of, you know, making sure that these things stay up to date, our plan is to regularly review this document and make sure that if there are any substantial changes. The bigger thing is, is there's new industry, particularly like with UAS and things that are, unmanned aerial systems that are coming online, that we have to kind of keep ahead of. We started, we talked about things like different energy offerings. We're not really in a place to start really looking at electrical aircraft right now, but that is on the future, and there's really no mention of that right now, because it's not needed, but that stuff that in the future, we're able to adapt to.
I didn't know if it would just, if it would be necessary after some of the master planning, if that would affect this at all, or...
Possibly, yeah. Yeah. And it's, again, this is really geared towards that commercial aeronautic activity, so individual users and stuff, this really doesn't apply to as much. One of the next projects is actually establishing rules and regulations for just the user base, because that's something that we're kind of, just traditionally, airports are kind of the good old boy system. You know, it's like, oh, you know, they won't mess with that, or we won't have to worry about that. Well, in this day and age, you do need to. So we're looking at that as our next project for the advisory board.
Very cool.
Further questions, counselors? Do you have a recommendation for us? I'm sure you do. I know what your recommendation is.
Staff recommends adoption of the, I don't think I put a, no, I didn't. Hold on. Adoption of proposed minimum standards for aeronautical activities and services.
Thank you, Paul. Counselors?
Motion to adopt Resolution CC-2022-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. Resolution's adopted with a vote of five to zero. At this time, if there's no objection, I'm going to move us to item 10, Appointments. We have a vacant seat on the Library Trust Board and an application from Cynthia Francisco, so I'd like to, I would move to appoint Cynthia Francisco to the Library Trust Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. We moved a little quick there. With a vote of five to zero, Cynthia is appointed to the Library Trust Board. We thank you for your willingness to serve. We also have a Public Housing Authority seat open and an application from Austin Pollard, so I will move to appoint Austin Pollard to the Public Housing Authority.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, Austin Pollard is appointed to the Public Housing Authority Board, and we thank him for his willingness to serve as well. All right. Item nine, Reports from Officers and Boards. Ms. Carnley.
A couple of items this evening. A request for an executive session pursuant to 25OS Section 307B2 to discuss labor negotiations with FOP Lodge Number 102. Request for an executive session pursuant to 25OS Section 30711C and D for the purpose of discussing plans for deterrence or prevention of, or protection from, an act of terrorism, and plans for response or remediation after an act of terrorism. And three, a request for an executive session pursuant to 25OS Section 307B4 involving confidential communication between the city council and city attorney concerning Randy Blake versus City of Stillwater Workers Compensation Court Case Number CM2021-03414-L. It is the opinion of the city attorney that disclosure of this matter will seriously impair the ability of the city council to process the proceeding in the public interest.
Thank you, Ms. Carnley. Mr. McNichol, welcome back.
Thank you.
What do you have for us?
It's hot here. Beyond that, though, Stillwater Police Department is accepting applications for police officers. SPD is one of the most well-equipped and trained police departments in the country. They're looking for diverse, innovative applicants who have a strong work ethic, high moral character, and actively embrace the community policing philosophy. The application period closes July 14th, 2022. Please visit stillwater.org/employment for more details.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor.
Yes. Shop Until Dark will be extra exciting this Friday, June 17th, because it overlaps with Downtown Stillwater's Third Friday Art Walk. Walk from store to store, sample refreshments, view art, and enjoy the extended business hours offered by our several local retailers. Live music will be performed by the Red Dirt Rangers, and you won't want to miss the food trucks, bike night, and car show. To see a full list of participating businesses and other great events, go to stillwater.org/shopSwo. And it's my birthday, so...
Whoa.
It's a party.
It's going to be a big party.
That's right.
Excellent. Thank you. Counselor Hawkins?
Kickoff Independence Day weekend with Stillwater's Boomer Blast Firework Show on Friday, July 1st, at Boomer Lake Park. Enjoy area vendors and food trucks before the firework show begins at 9:30 PM. Vehicles are not allowed inside Boomer Lake Park during this event, but free parking will be available at Stillwater High School Stadium and Cimarron Plaza. The city will continue to share event details on social media and stillwater.org as they become available.
Thank you so much. It's exciting. It's fun to do the fireworks show again. Counselor Jeloski?
The Enchantment Under the Sea Dance is this Friday, June 17th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. This family fun event will be held outside of the Stillwater Public Library and Prairie Arts Center. This will be live entertainment, crafts, a bounce house, a snow cone truck, and more. Call 405-533-8433, or stop by the Stillwater Community Center to get your tickets today. I mean, a bounce house for Vice Mayor's birthday.
It's a party. It's a party.
The snow cone truck is going to be well-utilized.
I know. Yeah.
I'm looking forward to it. My daughter and I are looking forward to it a lot. Counselor Clark?
The City of Stillwater Sharps Disposal Pilot Program has been extended. Residents can pick up a medical Sharps container for free, no questions asked, at the Stillwater Convenience Collection Center. Filled containers can be returned to the Convenience Collection Center during regular business hours, Tuesday through Friday, from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, or Saturday from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Excellent. I will let you know that the Stillwater Community United will be helping us celebrate Juneteenth at Southern Woods Park this Saturday, June 18th, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. All community members are invited to gather for games, music, free food and drinks, and entertainment for the whole family. City Hall will be closed in observance of Juneteenth on Monday, June 20th. Trash and recycling will be collected as usual, but not yard waste. All right. At this time, I will move to recess the city council meeting prior to item 12 on the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to recess the city council meeting. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the city council meeting will now be in recess. At this time, I think I'll go to SEDA. Can we go to SEDA? Does that sound okay? I will call to order the June 13th, 2022 Meeting of the Stillwater Economic Development Authority. First up on the agenda is the consent docket. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent. Please vote. Consent docket's approved with a vote of five to zero. Next up, General Orders. Consider fiscal year 2022-23 professional services agreement with Visit Stillwater. I knew Chris was out there. I don't know, do we have a presentation on this item? There's no presentation. The contract is in the packet. Changes this year relate to the updated hotel tax that was passed, thankfully, by our citizens. Some changes to the deliverables, the appendixes, minor changes at the request of Visit Stillwater. We've had several discussions to kind of get this updated. As we discussed in the past with the trustees, the compensation here, it's a public service, it's a professional services contract, so the amount is set at a set cost of $975,000. We base that off of a general calculation of 70% of what the anticipated tax revenue will be, because the way our new ordinance reads, 70% of that money is going to be spent on marketing services, which are of the type here that are provided by Visit Stillwater. And so that's kind of where we set the number. But of course, that is adjustable based on the will of SEDA, really, in terms of what that compensation will look like going forward, so, and of course, based on the ordinance. So, any questions about the contract?
I just wanted to comment that I'm pleased with the adjustments made to the scope of services and the measurables. I think it really reflects well what Visit Stillwater does for our community, and I think it was a good refinement of that language.
Thank you. Further comments or a motion on the item?
I move to approve the fiscal year 2022-23 professional services agreement with Visit Stillwater.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract. Please vote. Contract's approved with a vote of five to zero. Any reports from the officers of the board? Is there a motion to adjourn SEDA?
Remove.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the SEDA meeting. Please vote. We are now adjourned with a vote of five to zero. Next up, I will call to order the June 13th, 2022 Meeting of the Stillwater Utilities Authority. On the consent docket, is there a question, comment, or a motion?
Motion to approve the... Oh.
I would like to pull item D for separate consideration.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. Is there a motion regarding items A, B, and C?
I move to approve items A, B, and C.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket minus item D. Please vote. Consent is approved minus item D with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to items removed from consent. Is there a motion or discussion regarding item D?
Motion to approve item D?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item D from the consent agenda. Please vote. That item is approved with a vote of four to zero, with Counselor Clark not voting. That takes us to item five, General Orders. Item 5A is consider recommendation to engage with O-MAG for property and casualty needs. Melissa, do you have anything further to add to this item?
No, other than to tell you, we are going to allocate that total price amongst the utilities, because that goes into the calculation of their rates, and then we'll allocate to the general fund as well, and that'll come out of the self-insurance fund.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So... So, do we need a vote on this item? What's your recommended action for us?
Again, the recommendation is to authorize staff to engage with O-MAG for fiscal year '23 property casualty insurance needs in an amount not to exceed $549,475.
Thank you. Trustees?
Motion to accept staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the staff's recommendation. Please vote. That item's approved five to zero. Item 5B is approve a budget amendment increasing the electric purchase power expenditure and offsetting revenue. Melissa Reams.
And I'm here this evening for Lauren Smith. He is traveling this week, so I told him I would attempt to fill in. But as you can see that during the background, we originally approved through the budget a request for wholesale power. This is the power we purchase from GRDA that we send through our distribution lines out to all of our homes. And that original purchase was not to exceed $24,755,000. We came back to trustees on September 13, 2021, and asked for an increase. That increased the limit by a little over $4 million And that was to reflect the costs of Storm Uri. And remember, our bill to GRDA was a little over $7 million. Half of it came out of the energy, the electric rate stabilization fund, and the other half came from fund balance in the electric funds, fund balance. And that was created because we sent back dollars out of the general fund that were not needed. On, in April, then, we had to come back and ask for another increase to the purchase power expenditure limit. That bumped it up to $32,674,000. We track this monthly with a model that Lauren has developed, and that model is telling us that we probably are going to need more than what we have already provided for. So we're here this evening to ask for approval of a budget amendment in the total of $1,365,000. Part of that will, and the budget amendment is attached, we're going to increase the expenditure by the one point, almost $1.4 million, with an offset of an increase to revenue of $900,000, and then a decrease to the transfer from SUA operating fund to the rate stabilization fund of $465,000. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Trustees?
You explained that very well. Lauren will be proud.
You did. I do have a question about why we're not offsetting the full amount with revenue.
So Christie, Christie Cluck and I really pondered that one. This is a, I believe this is a more conservative approach. If you think about the volatility of energy costs these days, electric and gas, and we're going to talk about gas next, natural gas, they're increasing exponentially quickly. And in our, in our rates, our rates are pretty static. We do get a PCA that mitigates some of this increase, but if we were to say this is a dollar-for-dollar increase to revenue, we could come up short at the end of the year, and we don't want to get out of balance. So this is, while we continue to work the model and we're refining the model, Storm Uri kind of played havoc, not only with the people, but the model as well. We need to come back in and refine that. But we feel like this is a much more conservative approach. And if not needed, you know, we'll transfer the money, more money, over to the reserve.
Thank you. What is your recommendation for us?
Recommendation to... Let me see what Lauren wrote. Recommendation to approve budget amendments increasing fiscal year '22 expenditure limit for purchase power from GRDA by $1,365,000. And this is a not-to-exceed overall limit of $34,39,176, increasing electric sales revenue by $900,000, and decreasing transfers from the SUA operating fund to the electric rate stabilization fund by $465,000.
Thank you, Melissa. Trustees?
Motion to accept staff recommendations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the recommendation. Please vote. It's approved with a vote of five to zero. Item 5C is to approve a budget amendment increasing the fiscal year '22 expenditure limit to Enable for natural gas transport.
Well, we all know what's going on in the natural gas market. It's amazing where it's come from now, too, in such a short, really, short period of time. But we're here this evening because the cost of natural gas is going to outpace what we have in the budget. And so on the 7th of June of 2021, you authorized an initial expenditure of $1,075,000. And we really, you know, the trends were showing that that was going to suffice. Well, not anymore. On October 18, 2021, the amount was increased to $3,775,000. May 5, the amount was, May 5 of 2022, the amount was increased to $6,75,000. And now we have budget amendments prepared for another $500,000. We have, well, Lauren has scraped his operating budget. So this $500,000 is coming from the payroll budget due to the vacancies that the energy, the electric department has had. We're going, again, decrease that transfer out of the operating account into the energy, into the electric rate stabilization. We are going to increase revenues for electric service connection by $100,000 and increase the capacity payments that we receive from GRDA by $100,000. And that should get us up to $6,775,000. Questions?
Trustees?
Transferring from payroll works once.
It does work once.
What's the plan if this continues to be a problem?
Well, we've got a new budget year that's getting ready to start in two weeks and six days. So that's, we're gonna, that's a good thing. That's the point we're trying to get to. Norman and I were talking about this today. What are we going to do about fuel? And it can be fuel in any form that it comes in, natural gas, electricity, diesel, gasoline. You can talk to Paul about the, well, we heard from them last week, remember? Foster was here, and he was telling you that aviation fuel had gone from, I think, $21,000 to like $44,000. It had jumped great big. So how are we going to handle this? It's a great question. What I said to Norman this morning was, we're going to control the things we can control. I can't control the price of natural gas. I can't control the price of oil products. But what I can control are those discretionary expenditures. So we're going to go in, we're going to have this, they don't know it yet, but we're going to have director's meeting on Thursday, and we're going to visit with them about this. I'm not saying we stop travel. I'm not saying we stop training, but we have to be strategic about what we do. If I can get the same training via Zoom as opposed to having to buy an airline ticket in a hotel room, what would the choice be? Should be. There may be extenuating circumstances. If I can send one person, and they get trained and bring it back, I've saved maybe eight other spots that might all want to go in a group. So those are the kind of strategic thought processes that we have to go through. Do we have to buy paperclips in bulk? I know this is, this is an accounting example, but do I have to buy paperclips in bulk? Or do I have enough paperclips in this whole organization that it should never, ever have to buy another paperclip as long as we live? You know? Those are the kind of really simple, those are things we do at home, correct? Because I know Chris and I are hunkering down, and so we're being a little more strategic. I kind of wanted to go shopping over the weekend, but when I thought about getting in the car and burning gas to get back into town, I decided I didn't need to do that as bad. So those are the things your staff is going to be working through over the next, well, probably the first quarter. We want to set ourselves up for success and the ability to deal with what's coming at us that we can't control.
Good answer.
One of the really difficult questions becomes when you have essential services that you simply cannot reduce. And so that's another part of the equation that we have to take into account. So there will be some long-winded discussions about this over the next couple of weeks.
Melissa, over the history of this increase, which is multiplied by six over the course of the fiscal year, how much of that has been, have we been able to offset with additional revenues?
I think up through the May increase, we have. But now the gap is starting to get larger. It's not, when it was, when gas was low at $2 a decotherm, we could tolerate, we could really cushion the revenue. There was cushion there. And in the rate, there was cushion. But now that it's, I don't even know what it is now, $7 or $8 a decotherm? You know, that, that gap is glaring at us. So again, this is a much more conservative approach to kind of scrape those expenditure budgets and not assume that revenue is keeping pace with the expenditure.
The offsetting revenue for this gas expenditure is the power, the power we sell to GRDA, correct? So I mean, it should track, I mean, I assume they're paying us based on what we're actually paying for gas, correct?
Yes, but in visiting with Christie this afternoon, and we're going to get in and dig into this, the way that agreement was constructed between Enable and the city, and the way they calculate the price of, and we saw this with Storm Uri some, that contract was never constructed for the city to be made whole. And so it appears to Christie and I that the city subsidizes that about 11%. And so that's something that we're going to have to look into. She was of the assumption that it did hold us harmless.
I was of that assumption, too.
Oh, I think we all were, yeah. And so now that we're, the modeling is starting to show this gap growing, and so we've got to deal with it. And I think acknowledging that that's what our situation is, I doubt there's much we can do to change that contract at this point. And probably when gas was low, think about when that contract was negotiated back in 2015, 2016, natural gas prices were pretty low. So 11% of a pretty low number is not as noticeable.
I had a question, just to, the numbers seem different in the motion. Maybe I'm missing where the...
Do they not add up? I did not go back and add them up.
There's some discussion, I can't figure out. I'm just making sure that it's correct.
The motion, the proposal has it at the increase being $6,75,000. And then the next paragraph down, it has it going from $6,275,000 to $6,775,000. Is that, Counselor Jeloski? Is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, I just, I thought, probably I wasn't tracking it correctly, but maybe...
Okay, so you're going, you're moving it up by $500,000. So isn't that the difference between those two numbers in the first statement of financial impact? Is that where you're seeing it?
I think if you look, it says proposal solution at the third bullet point, it says $6,075,000.
Right, so it says our last increase brought it to $6,75,000.
For Enable. But in our natural gas account, there is also some expenditures that we make to ONG. And so if you'll look over here on the back page under financial impact, it talks about...
I did see that the Oklahoma natural gas...
Is $200,000.
But if you look at that bullet, it says the $6,75,000, $6,775,000 for national, natural gas expenditures includes funding both Enable at $6,575,000, and Oklahoma natural gas at $200,000, which that would be a $700,000.
Well, but over here, under proposed solution, where it says in May 5 of 2022, we increased Enable to $6,75,000, and probably still included in that this number, the 6275 is the $200,000 to ONG, would be, I guess.
So then what are we increasing it to today?
For Enable, we're taking the $6,75,000 plus the $500,000 that we're asking you to increase. But the total account is $200,000 higher because ONG is included in there.
I think that's what I was missing.
I know, that...
Sorry, I was just making sure we didn't go on the wrong number.
I'm hoping maybe next year we can, we can set those into two separate accounts.
And it's not to exceed $6,575,000, correct?
But that's for Enable.
For Enable.
I was reading the motion, and it specifically says Enable. I think that's...
That's the key.
The key.
Yeah. But if you look at the, my budget amendments got cut off. But if you look at the way natural gas is recorded in the...
I just don't want to leave Lauren hanging for $200,000.
Yeah.
It's a little higher.
Well, it's, I mean, it makes sense in the motion because it says to Enable, but the actual budget amendment itself does not split Enable.
And ONG.
And ONG.
Because it's all contained in one account.
So the budget amendment says $6,775,000 as the new budget amount for the total. So I think, I mean, the budget, the agenda item is clear in the sense that we're saying we're increasing the Enable, the amount that's authorized for Enable to 6,575, but there is some confusion there because that's not the actual budget amount. So I don't...
The recommendation's okay, it's just not clear.
Yes, it's not the clearest. We can improve the way we talk about this in the future, I suppose.
Yes, we can.
But I would defer to the City Attorney if there's, feel like there's any concern with the actual...
No, there's good notice to approve the budget amendment increasing fiscal year 2022 for Enable at that amount.
Thank you. That being said, is there a motion?
Motion to approve budget amendments increasing the fiscal year '22 expenditure limit to Enable for natural gas transport and supply to an amount not to exceed $6,575,000.
That's staff's recommendation, thank you.
Yes.
Is there a motion from the trustees?
Move to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the staff's recommendation. Please vote. It's approved with a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you so much.
Item 5D is consider award of fiscal year '22-23 chemical bid for the water treatment plant. Mr. Driscoll.
Good evening, trustees. James Driscoll, Water Utilities Director. And this item will not be one of the good deals, unfortunately, tonight. Okay, a little bit of background. The supply of chemicals to the Stillwater Water Treatment Plant is a requirement for providing safe, high-quality, and compliant drinking water to the SUA direct customers and bulk users, and it's contracted annually. So chemical bid specifications were sent out, received back. The low bids for each chemical was reviewed by staff and determined to be in compliance with the bid specs and are as follows. And these numbers should be in your packet as well. That shows all of the low bids received. So to the good part, cost increases. Chemical bid prices on this slide show fiscal year '21 through '23. I included '21 because there was a gradual increase on several from that point on, specifically chlorine gas. I added a column to the right for a percentage of change, and I even asked finance to verify those numbers because some of them are quite substantial.
Is that the change from '22 to '23?
'22 to '23 only. 22 to 23 only. And the highest, 154% was fluoride. Fortunately, we don't buy a tremendous amount of that, so it's not a huge impact. So budget impacts, provided some calculations and projections here. We based these projections off of 21 fiscal year uses. Those projections held pretty true for fiscal year 22, so we carried those through for 23 and shows you kind of where we think we'll be next year. About a, what's it, 100,000, 120,000 increase.
Do, do we have any, we don't have any sort of automatic cost adjustment in our water rates to deal with year-to-year changes in the cost of these chemicals, do we?
We...
Like we do with the, the cost of power adjustment, where if we're paying more for power, it automatically gets factored into the rates?
When you all approved the 3%, the lower of CPI or 3%, that did apply to water as well. But if you would like to look, we're seeing more and more of these, well, I sent something UPS the other day and there was a fuel adjustment on the bill of $11.75. So that may be another tool in our toolbox, much to Councilor Clark's question about how are we going to deal with this in the future. We may have to do some sort of PCA on the bill because we've really never done that with water, to my knowledge. We've just done the 3% escalator.
Okay, thank you. And James, just to, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I know you're, well, go ahead and finish.
Okay. So fiscal year 23 water treatment plant budget contains 597,000 for the purchase of chemicals. While this slide says no, no appropriations or amendments are needed at this time, from the previous slides, you know, we do expect to need to do an amendment at some point. You know, we want to wait until we get into next fiscal year's uses before we calculate that. I can also tell you that in the bid itself, we had verbiage allowing for a quarterly review of pricing based on a few factors. The reason we added that in is several of the vendors had stated that they would not bid or that they would bid a very high, safe price if we didn't include that verbiage. So there's, there's still a lot of volatility in this, some of these markets.
So you're saying then that there's a quarterly review that, that would allow them to increase their quoted price based on the volatility in the market?
Correct.
Not for us to go back and say, isn't it cheaper now?
Yeah. Correct. It, it, and that's based on actual market data that would be reviewed by all and it would have to be approved, you know, for both sides.
So it's not really a, an annual contract for these chemicals, it's more of a quarterly contract?
This year, yes. Typically, it's annual. The only one that I think Liquid Oxygen agreed to...
A fixed price for the year?
Yeah, carried last year's pricing over. I have a recommendation unless you have further questions.
Thank you. Trustees, questions for James? Other than my interruptions in the middle, sorry there.
Not a problem at all. So the recommendation is a motion to award the fiscal year 23 chemical bid at the pricing provided in this report and authorize general manager to sign all contract documents.
Thank you, sir. Trustees?
Motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the staff's recommendation here, please vote. It's approved with a vote of five to zero. All right, any reports from the officer or the officers of the board? Is there a motion to adjourn SUA?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the SUA meeting, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Utilities Authority is now adjourned. This time, we, I will call to reconvene the Stillwater City Council meeting at item 12 in the agenda. Is there a motion to enter executive session for the reasons requested by the city attorney?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to enter into executive session, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater City Council will now enter executive session.
All right, we are back from the city manager dropped his cup. Is there a motion to return to regular session?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Oh, Councilor Clark?
Yes.
Councilor Jalowski?
Yes.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zanotti?
Yes.
Councilor Hawkins?
Yes.
Is there no recommendation on any items from executive session?
No action.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the city council meeting, please call the roll.
Councilor Clark?
Yes.
Councilor Jalowski?
Yes.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zanotti?
Yes.
Councilor Hawkins?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, the still city council is now adjourned and that concludes our meetings for the evening.